I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning and welcome to our Thursday, Tuesday morning, excuse me, Tuesday morning, February 6th, meeting of the Board of County Commissioners. My name is Andy Hunthausen. To my left, Commissioner Tom Rolfe. Morning. To his left, Flo Liston will take care of us today. Good morning, Flo. To my right, Commissioner Candace Payne, good morning, and Roger Baltz, our Chief Administrative Officer. We have many special guests today and we'll, we'll be talking with our gang here, but the first thing I want to do is make sure that the sign-in sheet's going around. We want a good list of those folks that have attended our meeting today. Mr. Baltz, we have no consent action items, so you're off the hook this morning. And the reason I said special guests is because we have many of our department heads and/or, oh, just department heads, they are office holders, we did last week anyway. So department heads and we're going to do some department updates. We formally had done this in what we call an admin staff meeting and we met at least once a month and talked about what's going on in the different departments. But we decided to eliminate some meetings and consolidate and in the next year, we'll have to be posting everything like we do our regular commission meetings online via video and audio recording. So we thought, why not just do it here? And we'll do it once a quarter and we'll visit with our department heads and they can give us a what's up, how's it going? Highlights of things that are happening in their world so that the public can see that, the mission can ask questions and we can just connect a little bit. So I had a request beginning and this is probably, you're probably going to start something here, Mr. Cornwell. But Mr. Cornwell, our Chief Financial Officer asked to go first because he has some people waiting, I think, for him. He's got a meeting. So we'll allow you to go first. These are department updates. If you'd introduce yourself and you have the floor. Welcome, sir.
Thanks, Commissioners. My name is Frank Cornwell. I am the county CFO. Thanks for letting me go first. I have to go back and make investment purchases. Our treasurer is out. And when a security is available, you gotta buy it as soon as you can. So my update will be quick. I will just let you know that we are now officially kicking off the 2025 budget season. We have let all departments know that we have made some assumptions going forward to help them build their budgets. And just to let you know, we're, we're looking at a three and a half percent COLA, which is the first assumption. And we're trying to keep all fixed costs as low as we possibly can, somewhere between three to five percent. So we don't get too affected by the inflationary pressures we're having. Also, we have made the recommendation that all departments keep their staff levels at par or, or add no FTEs, please, going forward because we are still feeling, like I said, the inflationary pressures that we have had in the past year or so. It is coming down. Hopefully it'll be a positive effect, but it, I think it's a little too early to be making any aggressive moves with budgets. So that's my update. If you have any questions, let me know.
So thank you, Mr. Cornwell. So just to clarify here, you, you talked about assumptions for the budget season. And so those assumptions go out to our other department heads and office holders so that they can build their budgets. And just a little bit more detail about those for the folks that might be watching today. You talked about a 3.5% COLA and that doesn't come out of the air. It comes from somewhere. So that's one question. And then the other three to, three to five percent increase in other costs is related to what might be fuel or rent or inflationary factors that all of the departments will have to cumber rent costs.
Right.
So just to explain that a little bit for people who might not have any insight on our budget process.
Uh, no, uh, no problem. So we looked at the, the CPI on an annual basis for, or to the Consumer Price Index, which is the, I guess, the way we, you know, economists use, it's like the breadbasket where you go to, you know, pay for gas, the gas of your car and what do you buy for food? Just kind of the, the, the daily stuff that people buy to, um, to, you know, run a household. What have those prices increased? What have they done the past year? On average, in the west region, west mountain region, which is, which includes Montana, South Dakota, Idaho, Wyoming. So kind of a, a good batch of folks that match our economic region. And it, it has gone up about four and a half percent from the prior year. Looking at budgets and the pressures that we've had in the past, we, we had made the the decision not to do the full four and a half percent because we just thought that it'd just be too much pressure on the departments. So we went with a three and a half percent this year, I think, with a, uh, which would have about a one and a half million dollar impact on the total budget, which the, the departments should be able, should be able to assume or consume this year. That, that's where the C, the COLA comes from or the cost, cost of living adjustment. And the, oh, so to address your, the fixed costs, somewhere between three and five percent. Those, that is our IT, so James' department and the rent into the buildings for the county buildings. The, our administrative fees. So the commission also charges fees to the departments. I'm trying to think if there's others. If I'm missing, I might be missing one, something else, but that, that's, those are the fixed costs that we,
Gotcha.
the county charges out.
Okay. So just to carry on, I'll pass it on to the other Commissioners to see if any questions. But so we, you, your capacity, along with others that you've come to these general conclusions with, we make these assumptions and we share those with our department heads and then they use those assumptions to develop their budgets. And so when we meet in a month or two here, a couple of months, I guess, to start talking about department budgets and the commission meets with them and we go over their budgets. They have built these assumptions into their budget proposal for the year. We address that budget proposal and then that goes, we, we have public hearings in the spring and ultimately eventually approve a budget. But we start with these assumptions so that they can build their budgets and understand what they might need to do to adjust, whether it's number of people working there, office space, how to, how to make it work, I guess.
Right. So it, it's the preliminary budgets that the departments bring to you and then they'll present those budgets to you. And so these assumptions are necessary for them to build those. There are, there's other assumptions that will come out, like revenue assumptions, but we are trying to get ahead of the expenses because they're much more predictable than the revenue side of things. So the, these are those that'll be baked into that pie when it comes to you. And, and if there's any changes, we'll let, you know, let staff know that, hey, you know, something is, is different than what they expected. We can let them know that those assumptions have changed, but typically they don't. We, we should be able to hold the line on these and, and be able to build a, a good firm budget for you guys that you'll see in, I think, May.
Right. It's good. Thanks. I just a little bit about the process and I appreciate that. Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Cornwell? Commissioner?
There. Um, I just have a question. Last year was the first year I went through this budgeting process. So I had a few surprises and one of my concerns had to do with, so we do this, this midway budget and the heads of this various departments come to us and say, okay, this is what, where we're headed. Do we, what if they are not headed into the direction of a balanced budget? And we can see that now. What kind of, what can we do to help them come up with a balanced budget? Because that's pretty much our job, isn't it?
Uh, yes. So there is a mid-year review and when we look at those reviews of the departments, we'll reach out to the departments and we'll let them know, you know, they're trending in the wrong direction and the, their, their budget might, might not, might need amendments or might need adjustments or, or they'll have to adjust the way they're spending or adjust what they're, what they're doing in their operations. So it's, it's, it's a team effort. You know, they'll come to Roger and I and we'll work together to, to get them back on track. Thankfully, that doesn't happen very often, so we're in good shape going forward. But yeah, and, and note that this goes on all year long. This starts in July and it goes all the way through June. And if there's a, any, any issues, we're, we'll bring them to you. And you guys see the, the budget amendments at the end of the year or, or mid-year if we need them as, as soon as we need them. So there isn't a delay coming to the commission. So yeah, so it's an active monitoring process that we're, we're currently in right now.
So if we, if the director of a certain department comes forward and it's pretty certain that their, the requirements that you have set for this, the 3.5 COLA, that this is not going to work for them this year. So then do we adjust our expectations or, and, and when I'm saying expectations, the amount of money we're going to be spending that is the taxpayers' dollars? And then we say, sorry taxpayers, we've got to spend more money. And then is that how this works or is the department going to say, sorry, I need to, we're not going to spend that money after all? How does this work out?
Maybe Roger can add a little bit. But this was also my first budget is.
Oh, that's right.
So Mr. Chair, if I could, yeah.
So please.
Yeah. So Commissioner Payne, in our budget process, you will be presented with a preliminary budget and I want to stress the word preliminary. The only budget that can be approved, as you all know, for our county government has to be approved by the county commissioners. It has to come through you. Uh, there's a great deal of transparency. These meetings will be public that occur in May where budgets are brought forward to you. You will review them. And then you will, after you approve a preliminary budget, you will approve a final budget. So it is a ongoing expectation of all areas of our county government that they meet with, communicate with finance regarding what expenditures are occurring, what the condition of their budget is. And it's an expectation of every aspect of our county government that they produce a balanced budget. That's, that's an expectation.
So.
Go ahead.
And if they don't? So because last year it kind of came on me all of a sudden, well, that had, had not been actually, my expectations were not met. And I can see where this could happen again this year and I'm absolutely not going to stand around and, and let that happen. So
Okay.
Take that for what it is.
So if I could, Mr. Chair, yes, yes, Commissioner Payne. The Commissioners gave clear direction last year and with your budget assumptions, and I want to stress the budget assumptions that we're talking to you about, that Mr. Cornwell has gone through, those are recommendations from your staff based on our evaluation of the trends, our looking at strategies associated with our revenues and expenditures. In the end, the final decision will be made by the Commissioners. And as far as expectations being met, it is very common in our operations for different things to happen during the year, for some un, some surprises to occur. And when those happen, we have flexibility to bring budget amendments back to the county commissioners, but the county commissioners have to approve that, just like we will be talking to you about establishing any debt that we are going to incur this year. We'll be talking to you about what our, our reserve levels will be in our various funds. And over the years, Commissioner, sometimes different departments or different areas of our operation do expend more money than they had anticipated to expend. There's a requirement for them to justify that and any kind of adjustment that's made has to go through the county commissioners in a very open and transparent way. So I believe that the county commissioners have been very clear this year, just like every year, our expectation is every department will have a balanced budget.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. And Mr. Cornwell, just one more thing that kind of a look behind the curtain as well. A lot of this is far in advance. So the, as you've done some evaluation, preliminary evaluation about what the 3.5% and the possible fixed cost increases might do to each of the budgets and where there might be stress, where there might not be stress. And some of the things we're looking at, because we're talking about the 2025 budget now. And we're also looking, we, we lay these, I'll call them magic formulas that you, you guys can look at the, look at some of the trends and things and, and understand which budgets might be experiencing or could be experiencing stress in 25 or 26 or even if we stay on the same trend in 27, this budget might have some issues. So we're already looking ahead at many of those things. And that doesn't mean that one or another budget might come under stress on any one particular year. But often, as we did this year, uh, we were working July and August already, talking about 2025 budget and how there might, where there might be stress. How can we accommodate those issues, those potential issues and make sure that there's balanced budget or movement toward a balanced budget in those different departments? So it's a, it's a long look as well.
Right. Yeah. Uh, you're right, Mr. Chair. Right now it's early and there's going to be lots of adjustments and we're gonna, we're just now building. So when we send out the assumptions, it's basically saying, hey, go and start calculating and start building. So this is just the foundations and we gotta, we gotta start from somewhere, right? And so that's just to get 25 off the ground. And then like the chairman was referring to, that we're always thinking ahead. You have the CIP plans or the capital improvement plans, which look long and out into the future. And we're always trying to think two, three, four, or five years and down the line. And, and if there's anything that we perceive that has a tail or a tail effect that could be negative or positive, try to take that into consideration as well.
Thank you. Mr. Rolfe, anything?
Just, just to assure Commissioner Payne, I have, this is now my fourth time going through this. And I, one of the pleasant surprises of being a commissioner was to find the absolute expertise of our finance department. And as if I, I'm pretty, I know Commissioner is very concerned about the budget. I, I always have been, but I've been always amazed at the, at the great job our finance department does. And if, if you don't think that I'm tight, Commissioner Payne, my wife, just ask my wife. She makes reference to being tighter than a bull's butt in fly time. So we'll, that's, that's kind of the way I am too.
Well, thanks. And before we let you go, Mr. Cornwell, as Commissioner Rolfe said, the finance department, but also each one of these, each one of our departments do a very good job in bringing forward really responsible budgets. And yeah, and we've had an excellent history in having balanced budgets and a strong fiscal responsible county family wide. So it's not that there aren't issues here and there, but overall, we've done a really good job and we've been very thoughtful in, in our processes. So thank you for that.
Yeah, thank you.
All right. Appreciate it.
Right.
That was really quick and easy, right? Glad you went first. Who'd like to go next? See, this is a voluntary deal now. Or I'll pick if you want me to. James, welcome.
I'll stay brief. You have my written report.
Is your mic on there? There you go. Sorry. Thank you.
Want me to start from the beginning?
Yeah, you know, for the recording, it might be good.
Okay. Thank you. Chairman, Commissioners, good morning. James Thomas, ITNS Director for the city and the county. You have my written report. It caught us up from November to January. So I'll stay brief, but please feel free to ask any questions. One of the advantages with this unseasonably warm weather we've had is our network team got a jumpstart on getting a lot of the exterior work done, out connecting a lot of our buildings. They pulled roughly a thousand feet of new network cable. Mainly they spent a lot of time at the wastewater treatment plant, which is a main hub for a lot of connectivity. A lot of our buildings all go to the wastewater plant and then connect back to city county services. They replaced four microwave antennas that were aging out. A couple of them had failed. We put some temporary workarounds in place to keep the buildings functional, but we now have new hardware supporting those buildings. There's still some, some work to be completed, but I do want to kind of give a shout out to our city partner. The city parks department and the city electrical provided us with boom trucks that could get us up and down to the top of the tower much faster than it took to climb the towers. So at times we actually had four people at one site, one in a boom truck and one climbing the tower. So we feel we got the work done fairly efficiently. But we did, we did take advantage of the nice weather and now it changed. So we're delayed until our weather warms up again. As I mentioned in my written report, we, we really have been focused on break fix, keeping things running, keeping all the computers working for staff. But one notable work effort that we completed was for the court system. And this covers both the district court and the municipal court. And one of the problems they were experiencing was they scan all of their documents. And so all day long, they're scanning all their court dockets, court documents. Their scans had basically been degrading to the point that we're taking almost 45 seconds to one minute per scan. And this was impacting their efficiency, their workflows. They scanned into the state system known as full court. And they let us know, we, we heard both from the district court and municipal court, that this was impacting their, their business flows. We spent a significant amount of time over a couple of months trying to identify and correct this problem. Turns out we had been engaging with the state of Montana and their network staff, as well as the court administrator's office, trying to help identify where this problem was. Just last week, they made some headway and all the court scanning is down around 10 seconds on average. And so we really feel that's a good success. The courts are much happier. Their workflow is, is occurring much more efficiently. Uh, the last thing I want to touch on, probably a touchy subject based on the previous director's report, but our IT budget. Normally our IT budget is going through the process early so that we can get our costs out to all the departments. So they know what to expect from the IT department. So we usually try to get this rolling in, in December and January. We got a little bit delayed. We found some changes that needed to occur in the IT budget. And so we postponed our, our budget delivery to make sure that we've got a good visibility, good understanding. And since the IT budget is joint city and county, I'm actually working with both the city and county finance directors to make sure this budget is, is solid and that we understand everything that's happening with it. We expect the, or I expect the IT budget to actually be in front of the steering committee, the IT steering committee, which is made up of multiple department directors, uh, so that they can get a look at our budget, how it's going to impact their operations. And then, uh, so I, I feel that's going to occur in February and we should be able to get it in front of the IT board, which is both city and county again, and we should be able to do that in March. So.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Any questions, Commissioners? I do not, though it doesn't sound like it's as fun to ride the boom truck as it is flying the tower. I don't, or maybe not as thrilling or scary. I don't know what the right word would be, but.
Um, from the report that I got, HR, close your ears. The person on the inside climbing the tower that was actually tying the network cables into the, the ladder that, that holds them was doing fine until the bucket truck bumped the tower.
Ooh.
And then they realized just how much sway was in the tower. So.
Yeah, we won't tell her. Okay. Thank you. That was a good segue. Carrie, would you like to come next? Thank you, James. Good morning.
Morning Commissioners. For the record, my name is Carrie DeRozier. I'm the Human Resources Director with the county. Like James noted, we submitted our reports last week. I'm not sure if you have had an opportunity to review that, but I'll just kind of hit some highlights and maybe add a couple of things that I didn't cover in the report. So we've been busy with recruitments as always, but we have the numbers there. I kind of included what we missed in November, December, when we didn't have meetings. But Christina was busy. We got the W2s issued to all employees. We had just over 500 of those issued for the year. We do a combined, well, you can either get them electronically within the system or you can waive that option and get a printed form as well. So we offer both those. It's kind of cool. Employees can go in anytime once those are finalized and review and access the W2. We also got the vacation overage letter, uh, letters out. So we had 34 employees that had excess vacation for the year that they need to use by March 31st. So they'll be working with their department heads or elected officials to try to use that time before the March 31st deadline. And then we have 1095C forms. We're also working on finalizing. Those are due out to employees by, I think, March 2nd. And so that's a pretty cumbersome process in getting that out and then submitting to the feds. And that is, Emily works on that. So we're also keeping a close eye on the health plan. Good news is that we're ahead of last year's claims expenses by just over 600,000 to date. So that's good. We're also working pretty hard on trying to reduce claims expenses on the pharmacy side as I presented that contract in December. And we're at this time looking at potential changes to the health plan benefits. Either, and we're kind of balancing plan costs and planned savings for some different scenarios. So we'll be working on that through the budgeting process. As you saw in my report, our HR talks for January was on succession planning, where we sent out our succession planning guide and then talked through the content of that. So if you have any questions on that guide, feel free to stop by or give me a call and I can visit with you on that. Other topics, I also put a recap of what we did for this fiscal year so far. So July through the end of December, we had some interesting topics. Some not so interesting, but they're more for compliance, making sure, you know, ethics in public employment, not so fun, but very important. So, and we're kind of excited about next month's topic. We're going to be kind of introducing, I'm getting some thoughts going on how to interview and recruit when experience is not not fully there, meaning, so we're looking for potential in candidates and how do we pick that out from our candidate pool? How do we increase our pool so that we have a greater number of candidates? And we're looking for good potential when we don't have the experience. So we're going to be talking about that. And as far as a recap of calendar year 23, we managed 84 recruitments for the year. That was down from 99 the previous year. So that was good in that we're not processing so many recruitments. And we brought on 65 new hires. 54 of those were regular versus short-term or temporary. And we also processed 86 terminations, 72 being regular status. So we're still busy on that. A lot of, some of those were the tail end of COVID hires that we didn't need any longer. Also, for the calendar year 23, we developed and approved seven new promotion plans, which then we also had 11 promotions that we processed for calendar year 23, which was just more than the 10 that we processed for calendar. which was just more than the ten that we processed for calendar year twenty-two. We have specific definitions for what a promotion is versus what a position change is. Um, promotion, we have to have a promotion plan in place. There has to be a recommendation that meets certain requirements for that, so. Um, right now, going forward, I'm working on updating the EEO plan and also other things that we'll, we'll be working on. Um, we have several policies that need updating and we're also looking at pay plan changes. So, um, a lot is happening in HR all the time. This is, um, that we, stuff we work on in between the stuff that comes to us daily. So if you have any questions on anything I've talked about today, feel free.
Mr. Chair.
Thank you, yes, Commissioner.
It, it sounds like we're talking about a, roughly a twenty percent turnover in employees. Um, is that, how does that, uh, compare to other county, uh, urban counties in the, in the state? Do you have a feel for that?
I have never gone out and asked what turnover rate is for other entities. Um, it is, I feel fairly high. There's certain, um, like the detention center has a higher turnover rate, so they kind of affect, um, other department or overall numbers. The prior year, because of all the hires and terminations for, um, through COVID, um, it was, it was like at thirty-four percent, so it was really high. Um, so it's down from that, but probably six years ago, you know, we saw an increase in retirements, which led to a trickle down of having to fill, um, some spots. So, um, added to that, over the last four or five years, a lot of movement as far as people moving out of Helena to other states or other cities. Um, it's just been kind of, um, much higher turnover than we saw even, you know, the past ten years. But honestly, I don't know what other entities are experiencing.
Do, uh, the impression I've got is our, our health plan is, is among the best in the, in the area that are, that we have our employees on. Is that, uh, kind of an accurate statement?
We have a very solid, um, health plan. We don't have the best, um, but I don't, I don't know if we've always shot to be the best, um, because that would be really expensive. But we have a solid plan. We always try to, um, have as many benefits where we can balance, um, the contributions that we pay for our employees, what they have to pay, um, with the expenses, um, to the plan. So we have a really solid one, like compared with the state. Um, they have higher deductibles for their, what would be equivalent to our traditional plan. But, um, so our deductible is much lower, but our contribution rate might be a little bit higher. So it's hard to compare apples to apples, um, for health plans, but, uh, I think it's really solid and it is definitely a recruitment tool.
Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Carrie, really appreciate it. Busy, busy, busy. Who's next? Who would like to come? Oh, look at that, a volunteer. Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. I'm Dorinda Niemann, Director and Health Officer for Lewis and Clark Public Health. I have three items for you today as an update to the work that's happening in the department. Um, the first has to do with our community health assessment. And so every three years, we do a community health assessment. This is a, um, this is the previous one or the one that we're currently, the most current version of our community health assessment. It is full of lots of really incredible information about the health status of residents in our county. Everything from, um, social determinants of health, like, um, economic stability and housing to asthma and vaccination rates. It's, um, it's pretty robust as far as a data report is concerned. We do this every three years in partnership with the Healthy Together, our Healthy Together Partners, which includes St. Peter's Health, Peerview Health Center, um, United Way of the Lewis and Clark area and our Rocky Mountain Development Council. We all come together to, um, put the report together. And then it's used, the data is used in actionable ways moving forward. So the Community Health Improvement Plan then gets built based on what the data says are the greatest priorities for our community. And that's where we put, as a community, put resources towards and efforts towards improving the health of, um, residents in the county. So we will be going through that process again this year. One of the biggest changes that we will, um, will be doing is a door-to-door survey. In the past, it's been a telephone survey and, and, um, that was contracted, uh, by St. Peter's Health to do a telephone survey out to residents of the county to gather information from residents about their health status and, um, what they think are priorities. This, this year, we are going to do a door-to-door and we're also partnering with our neighboring counties. So, um, we'll be gathering information from Broadwater, Jefferson, Mar and Powell Counties as kind of a, a regional approach, because, um, St. Peter's Health and, and some of our other medical providers serve more than just Lewis and Clark County. And so we're expanding the, um, um, what the report will cover. So that's a really exciting, a couple of really exciting big steps that we're taking this year that we've not done before. So more to come. Um, the door-to-door survey will happen the first week in June. So we're hoping the snow and ice will be gone by then.
Maybe.
Uh, the second item for update that I have for you is, um, out in East Helena, the EPA has updated their, um, requirements for, um, cleanup of soils in, um, residents' homes and, um, also commercial properties in the East Helena area. So because of the super funds, many years ago, um, there was a big, um, soil cleanup and remediation effort happening to avoid, um, lead exposure to individuals who are living in that community. They've done a redetermination of the levels that are acceptable in the, in the soil. And that's based on some, um, recent residential soil testing as well as understanding of bioavailability, which is, um, how easily something is absorbed into the body. And so because of this, um, updated or new information, the EPA has, um, has lowered the residential lead cleanup level um, from five hundred parts per million to four hundred parts per million. So several years ago, many years ago, when that initial cleanup happened, they only cleaned up residences, um, that were above that five hundred mark. And, or, and then they cleaned it up to five hundred. And so now they're going to go back and test resident soils, very robust testing approach that's going to happen in the spring and then clean up anything that's above four hundred. So those that, um, you know, many years ago, when that happened before, they may have been at four hundred and fifty hertz per million and they didn't get cleaned up because it had to be over five hundred. And so this will be a, a huge benefit to the residents of East Helena. And, um, again, mo, um, that all, you'll, you'll start to see a lot of that activity happen out in East Helena starting in the spring, both the sampling and then the cleanup efforts. And then my last update for you is behavioral health related. Um, we have been watching very carefully the, um, the state's commit eight seventy-two commission. Uh, this was a bill that was passed back, uh, in the last legislative session to put funds towards behavioral health efforts. Um, and specifically initiative number three that has been discussed by the commission and approved by the governor, uh, has to do with supporting crisis services. So in our community, we have the Mobile Crisis Response Team that goes out, um, co-responds with law enforcement in an instance where an individual might be having a, a behavioral health crisis. And we have a team that goes out, we being the community. It's, um, service provided by St. Peter's Health. And then, um, the crisis facility, which we have not had open since twenty, the end of twenty nineteen, and we've been working diligently to get that service back open again. Um, initiative number three will put seven point five million dollars towards these crisis services. So we will see some of these funds come into our community to help, um, build and sustain crisis services in our community. Our, our role in that at Lewis and Clark Public Health is to, um, not only monitor what's happening with that commission and, and see how that will benefit the community, but also we facilitate, um, our leadership team here at the local level to make sure that we have a good system, behavioral health system in place to serve people who are in need of those services. And so, um, we continue to bring partners together, have those conversations. Um, we're, we're working closely with St. Peter's, um, to make sure that that Mobile Crisis Response Team is sustained and is, is working in our community. And then we're also working with, um, Many Rivers Whole Health to, um, open up the crisis facility as well. So the, that, all of that work continues. And, um, just a last note, um, the local advisory council on behavioral health is doing their strategic planning session this morning. So after my report, and you'll see me sneak out because I want to get over to that, to that session and, and be a part of that work, so. What questions can I answer for you today?
Thank you very much. And after this meeting, I'm going to try to join you as well. Commissioners, questions for? Thank you very much and thank you for all the work you do. I appreciate it. All right, who's next? Mr. McNally.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Greg McNally, Director of Community Development Planning Department. You have my memo as well. Um, just to talk about a few things in the memo there and I'm available to answer some questions afterwards. But, uh, some of our conditional use permit applications in response to our part two zoning have been active. We've approved seven of them so far. Uh, we've got one more up for our Board of Adjustment, uh, tomorrow night. Our Board of Adjustment does meet the first Wednesday of the month at five PM. And, uh, it's a five-member board and we are currently down one member. So if you're aware of anybody that, uh, would like to serve on the Board of Adjustment, we will accept their application and consider it for, uh, serving on that board. Um, Ms. Morgan in our office is currently engaged in several long-range planning efforts that are important to our county, uh, one of them being the city-county infrastructure study, a joint project we're working on with the city. Uh, we are currently, uh, involved in negotiating a contract with our selected consultant to start that project. So that should be underway shortly. Our growth policy update, uh, for the countywide is, is, uh, kicking off. It's kicked off already. We are working with the contractor, um, in the first phase of that project, establishing a foundation of documents and, and research and making that information all available to our contractor. Uh, that project will continue on for the year and, and continue into twenty twenty-five and under which we hopefully will have a new growth policy adopted by the county. Our subdivision regulation update project is, uh, continues to be underway. We are continuing to look at, uh, individual edits to chapters as they're prepared by the consultant, uh, individually and, uh, making comments and sharing those comments back and forth with the, with the consultant to make sure we have a solid document that we can then share with the public and get further comments on. A couple of ARPA projects that we have in the works. Uh, one of them is our North Star Park. Up in the North Star subdivision, there's an eighteen-acre park up there. We submitted an ARPA request to do, uh, to get some funding, uh, and that we were rewarded for, for the design of a park up there. We did identify a consultant that can work on that design and we are currently working on a contract for that coming forward. Um, some of our subdivision activity, which you'll see on our agenda today, uh, after we finish with the director updates. Um, one of them being the preliminary approval extension for a subdivision that was issued a preliminary approval, uh, three years ago for the amended plot of Miles Minor subdivision. Uh, Ms. Ward will be bringing that forward for you, for your consideration today. Ms. Hubbard has been working diligently on a final plot application for the Prestige at Red Fox Meadows. That's a, uh, subdivision inside the Red Fox Meadows subdivision that, uh, is being developed. And that is ready for final plot approval and will be on your, uh, for your consideration today as well. Uh, also upcoming, uh, that, uh, I'll be bringing forward to you in the near future is an extension request for the Heron Creek subdivision. They have a subdivision improvements agreement with the county for some of their remaining improvements. And so I'll be bringing that forward for you for consideration as well. Our flood plan administrator is, um, and manager is quite busy with flood plan applications. There are currently three permit applications under review. Uh, in, uh, currently, right now, Mr. McNamee is in, uh, St. Pete's Hospital in the Education Center, running a tabletop exercise for flooding, uh, and can, in, uh, working with our Department of Emergency Management Services, uh, preparing for an actual flooding event. There's a simulated event and there's a two-day tabletop exercise that's taking place this morning and tomorrow morning. Um, and so our staff will be engaged in the recovery side of that, uh, tomorrow. Historic preservation also in, uh, my department is quite busy. A couple of things to highlight, there's a number of items here in the list, but, uh, we, that department relies on volunteers quite a bit. Uh, a lot of volunteers come in and provide their services, whether it's scanning documents or doing research or providing documents. Uh, there's a lot of, of volunteer effort going on. One volunteer, David Kerd, uh, started with, with working with us in December and has been busy, uh, itemizing, um, documents in Pamitardo's office. I don't know if you've been in Pamitardo's office lately, but it's a heck of a lot more organized than it's ever been. I encourage you, if you haven't seen it yet, to stop in. Uh, that's, I think, a, a lot of the work of, of Mr. Kerd and, and, uh, his efforts. So I really appreciate the volunteers that we have, in particular, Mr. Kerd in that particular instance. Um, our, uh, work with the City of Helena continues on the demolition ordinance. The City of Helena has a demolition ordinance. And, uh, our staff in Historic Preservation has been working with the city to make edits to that. We've brought a couple of those forward to the, uh, Historic Tourism Council for their consideration. They've made some comments and we've had some public hearings and it just continually kind of goes back and forth till we round out that document. But hopefully that'll be resolving quickly. And, uh, I know I went pretty quickly, but I'm sure if you have any questions, I'm here to answer.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I may, you said you're looking for, um, a member on the Board of Adjustments. Uh, what's the specific requirement for someone for that?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, thank you. Great question. So we, uh, the individual would have to live within the Helena Valley planning area, would have to be subject to the part two zoning regulations, not subject to the part one zoning regulations. So those are our citizen-initiated districts. So if you have property within our part two zoning district, um, we would love to see your application for consideration.
So that's the only requirement is to live, uh, within the, the valley zoning area?
To have property.
To have property rather there and, and to, to be, um, a, a resident or, or for that property to be in the part two area.
That's correct.
Not part one.
And, and if anybody's listening and has questions about that, they can certainly contact our office and we'd be happy to give any, any guidance on that. Thank you.
I'm not sure you're eligible, Commissioner, but maybe we'll, we'll see.
Pardon me?
I said, I'm not sure you're eligible, but we'll see. Thank you, Mr. McNally. Any other questions for Mr. McNally?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. A theme so far for the departments, uh, not very busy, gosh. That was joke. Kelly, in case you. Welcome.
Good morning, Chair Commissioners. Uh, I'm Kelly McBride, the Director of your Department of Criminal Justice Services. You have my report, but, um, I'm so proud of it that I printed it out for you also. And a slide presentation that we gave to Hometown Helena is included, the slides. Um, and our newest, uh, quarterly report. So we will be, uh, publishing quarterly reports that looks like this. Um, so, um, and the timing is perfect. So each time we come present, I'll have a new quarterly report for you and for the public as well. Um, so going on, um, Criminal Justice Services, our Criminal Justice Coordinating Council continues to meet and do great things. They are meeting every other month. Um, their three priorities that they have set for us include strengthening our pre-trial services program with the expectation that our program, our pre-trial services program become nationally accredited. Uh, to accomplish that, the Criminal Justice Coordinating Council, or CJCC, established a pre-trial work group. That work group has, uh, District Court Menahan, Judge Piskulich, uh, County Attorney Kevin Downs, Commissioner Hunt-Housen. Uh, we've got some people with lived experience, so just, just some great experience. Everybody brings a different perspective of that pre-trial experience to the work group. And we're, we've taken feedback. We've met once as a work group, um, and we're applying for technical assistance on pre-trial from the National Institute of Corrections. So moving forward with that, um, that priority. The next priority is really, is to look at jail diversion and what we can best do to, uh, we don't want people ending up in the detention center at all. So what would be the best plan for that? Uh, we're looking at some, some different law enforcement assisted diversion programs, working with Helena Police Department, our community partners. And our plan right now is to apply for an AmeriCorps Vista that has been budgeted, um, to make that application and get a Vista, uh, to help us with the. to make that application and get a vista to help us with the research and community involvement. The third priority is communication. And while you just saw our slide presentation and our quarterly report, we presented at Hometown Helena on January 25th, and we had some great questions at the end of the presentation, and we'll continue looking for other ways to communicate the work that we're doing. The rest of the report, I talk about our Citizens Advisory Committee, our Behavioral Health Services Team, data services. I will say we are, we have selected a vendor to be our case management and data system. The vendor that we selected will talk with the vendor that the the detention center has selected. So we'll be able to have very robust data, data from the detention center side and then the data that we have ourselves. That contract is with the County Attorney's Office, and we should be presenting that to you for a final approval within the next couple of weeks. So that will be coming. And again, I'm excited to have that that data that we've been waiting for. And then court services, those are our specialty courts and pretrial services. So that's my high level.
Thank you. Questions, Commissioners? Just say nice job to you and your team at Hometown. I was there. It was was great. And I think any opportunity like this to share what you're doing with the community is great. So I like the quarterly report and slides and share them wherever possible. It's good stuff. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay. Hello, hello.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. For the record, my name is Jenny Chambers, Lewis and Clark County Public Works Director. To give the public a little bit overview, the Public Works Department is responsible for construction and maintenance of county roads and bridges. To do this, we also have a very large vehicle and equipment fleet that requires maintenance from our county professional staff in our in our maintenance shop. And in addition, we provide maintenance and oversight of county buildings, maintenance work within all the county buildings. We manage solid waste activities, including the proper disposal, including recycling and reuse of material at our landfill and also in coordination with the City of Helena's transfer station recycling area. We also manage and coordinate all of the improvements and maintenance of rural improvement districts and special districts, which is up to about 157 now across the county, including our noxious weed, mosquito and mosquito districts, and also solid waste districts. So just to give a little overview of what Public Works does. So as you can imagine, there's a lot of things that we're working on. But just going to highlight a few things for you guys today. One effort that we're constantly working on and constantly working through is procurement and purchasing efforts. We have several underway right now. We currently have two requests for proposals to solicit professional engineer services to do some design work. That would be Lake Helena Road Improvement Design, which is to design that road from Deal Lane to the Causeway to get us a plan in place on how you would face construction of that road in the in the future. So we have to have the shelf-ready design all squared away, and that takes a couple of years to get that project completed. We also have a request for proposal to get a professional engineer for the Custer and Henderson Traffic Circle and Roundabout Design that is currently being advertised. And so we're getting professional engineers for for that to help us get that design for that project in coordination with the Fairgrounds ARPA project on that paving effort that you guys have approved. We also have five invitation for bids out or in progress, the Juniper Stable Road Improvement District Asphalt Project, the Rural Improvement District Crack Seal, the County Crack Seal Invitation for Bid. We have a Chip Seal Invitation Bid that is both the RIDs and countywide combined. And then we also are working on a Bird's Eye Asphalt Overlay. And that will be the second phase of the Bird's Eye, Bird's Eye Asphalt Overlay Project, which goes from Austin to Three Mile. We'll be hopefully getting that advertised this Saturday on that particular project. I also wanted to share some highlights on some progress on some of the ARPA projects, the American Rescue Plan Act projects. As you guys are aware and had some coordination up in Lincoln, Lincoln Waterfill Station is done, and that project is successfully complete. A really good success there. The well was drilled, really good water supply. It's going to be a huge asset for the Lincoln area for fire suppression and also to allow Public Works to use it for some of our needs on maintaining those gravel roads in that area. So the final price was a little over $68,000. And our ARPA approved amount was a little over $67,000. So the road contribution for match funds was under $1,000 to get that project done and complete. So definitely fell within budget. The other ARPA project to give you an update on is the the radio. You guys approved us getting new radios for our mobile equipment and also our handheld radios to help with coordination on snow removal or or maintenance activities, but also during emergency situations. We had a tough time with some of the bidding of that effort. Went out two times for bids. Both of the bids were higher than price. We've been working through direct negotiations with vendors. And we have now have an approach that we're going to move forward with. We had to switch gears a little bit. We are working with a purchase order for the equipment through Motorola to get the equipment. And then we'll have a separate contract with Capital Communications to do the labor and installation of that equipment once we get the equipment purchased. Right now, our project is going to be a little over $408,000. Our ARPA approved amount was a little over $429,000. So it's going to be a potential cost savings of $21,000. We'll see how it all shakes out, making sure there's no contingencies or things we need to do with change orders, but we're looking really good with that project right now. The ability to use the ARPA funding to get some of these needed projects done is been a huge, huge effort and success for the Public Works Department. So I definitely appreciate that. So with like the ARPA funding and other grant opportunities, we're currently working on a few grant opportunities for our buildings. One is the Homeland Security Grant for the courthouse. We are working with both the Grants Office Department and also Disaster and Emergency Services to replace all of the security cameras at the courthouse based upon the cybersecurity risk of the HIC Vision, which is the 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 model that we should we should replace out and get to a something that's not a Chinese-based equipment camera to monitor those areas to get that upgraded. But then we also got a vendor to do a security gap analysis for us at the courthouse to see where there's areas that we need coverage. So there's some areas out in the parking lots, some of the stair stairwells. So we're also going to add new cameras in with this grant application. So we both upgrade the ones that we need to replace, but then also get some of the gap coverage area within that grant application. That grant is due in mid-March, and so we're really busy in the month here of February trying to get that all compiled together. The second one is also for the courthouse. This grant is through the Montana Historical Preservation Grant. It's through the Montana Department of Commerce to support public entities in historical sites, historical societies, museums. The maximum grant award is $500,000. So it's a pretty large grant. If we're successful, it'd be really, really valuable. The focus is for planning and implementation dollars to replace and upgrade the elevator at the courthouse. We're trying to proactively look for a more efficient system that would also extend and provide us some capabilities to go to the attic for some of the records, management, storage, and maybe another alternative with a with a different kind of lift from from the elevator system. And then also, how do we accommodate Americans with Disability Act? The elevator, if it goes down, we would be out a very long period of time, and that historical building would have a lot of impacts associated with that. So we're proactively trying to look at how do we replace that elevator? How do we look at other systematic controls for accommodation? And then build this into a grant application. So we have money set aside in our capital improvement plan to help with match money, but looking to leverage some additional federal dollars, our state dollars through this grant in order to get that accomplished. This is extremely tight timeframe. The grant is due February 29th. So you'll be seeing some stuff before you as far as Board of County Commissioners with a public hearing for environmental assessment that we have to open up to the public, and then also your request to approve this. This grant's submitted at the end of this month. So we're hoping, we're hoping, we're hoping it's going to move forward and get some good dollars to support us with that project. A couple of other updates. Just wanted to give you an update. I haven't shared in a while on the the efforts with the Metropolitan Planning Organization. As you are aware, this county and the City of Helena and City of East Helena are transitioning from a Transportation Coordinating Committee to a Metropolitan Planning Organization for the whole greater Helena area. We continue to have monthly coordination meetings with both Public Works and the Planning Department within the county, City of Helena, East Helena, and the Montana Department of Transportation. We will have before you four or five documents and agreements that we've been working through with the city and MDT that are agreement documents and and collaboration agreements and interlocal agreements about how we're going to operate under this MPO. So you'll be seeing those shortly. In addition, we're hopefully going to have the first kickoff meeting of the Metropolitan Planning Committee and the Transportation Technical Advisory Committee, hopefully at the end of March. So then, once those meetings start, we'll be actually fully formed, and we'll have those coordination efforts continuing. So there is light at the end of the tunnel with this MPO process, and we're making a lot of progress on that. One other item I kind of want to talk about just because it's the season, of course, it's weather right now. And so Public Works and buildings basically impact a lot based upon the way the seasons fluctuate. So winter has been pretty, pretty, pretty light as far as the seasonal activities allowed us to get out, get some grading work and work accomplished. But with the cold weather snap and some of the snow that we've got here lately, there's been a lot of warming weather and freezing weather. So the Road and Bridge Department has been very busy with water on the water on the roads, water issues, culverts freeze. They back up, they go on the roads, and so they've been out trying to freeze many of those. Focus areas have been York, Remini, Prickly Pear, Temple Pass Road, Dalton Mountain, Heron Lake, and Unionville. So just wanted to showcase that the it's the county is a pretty large county, and you got to keep in mind that there's a lot of things going on and different activities. And so they are definitely busy out there doing those those works based upon the seasonal seasonal impacts that caused that group to focus their priorities and shift gears on a day-to-day basis. In addition, our building staff has had increased workloads due to repairs. So a lot of work orders have come through with the negative cold temperatures, and they've quickly responded to get those done. One example is at the Public Works Complex, which you don't think that's a county building. The weed division building, the weed building that we have with the RID program, our county engineer and our noxious weed staff, lost heat for two days. So we basically had to shift gears, get some fan replaced, and then get that up and running. And we had significant concerns because we thought because it's a it's a trailer mobile house that we were going to also have freezing pipes and other damages based upon that building impacts, but we did not. So things that just quickly jump into gear, get those accomplished, and then they're able to help respond across the county for all those different activities. And then the last thing I just want to share with you, I'm very pleased to share it. Last week, in Billings was the Montana Weed Control Association Conference. And two of our, two, two awards were provided to Lewis and Clark County. One was to Christian Leonard as the Weed Fighter of the Year. And then the second one was actually to the Lewis and Clark County Weed District for being the Weed District of the of the year as well. So two awards came back to Lewis and Clark County for the Noxious Weeds Department from that Montana Weed Control Association meeting. So just wanted to highlight that.
Thank you. Yay. And you didn't bring the Weed Fighter of the Year with you today?
I did not bring the Weed Fighter of the Year.
Well, if you'd send him our way at one at a meeting soon, we'd like to, you know, embarrass him in public and thank him.
Okay, we'll do.
If we can. So thank you very much. Any questions for?
Mr. Commissioner.
Yes, please.
I just want to make a make comment. You know, a lot of our departments do a good job of on on their financing and prioritization. But I I think that what what you're doing in Public Works is exemplary. The way that you set priorities when to use our our limited funds most effectively. And and the fact that you analyze bids to see if there's a better way to do it, the way you handled that radio project, and the bids came in too high and 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 kept insisting that it could be done for a lower amount and held tough, saved the the public a lot of money. So thank you for your concentrated effort to to save money for our taxpayers.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Really appreciate it. Good mornings, Macaulay.
Good morning, Mr. Chair Commissioners. Anne McCauley, Director of the Grants and Purchasing Department. I also provided you with a January report, so I'll just hit on some of the highlights of that and some things moving forward. The purchasing policy update. Casey Hayes, our purchasing officer, has been working diligently since October, meeting with many departments, elected officials on necessary updates to that purchasing policy. There was some changes in the 2023 legislation that are going to be incorporated into this new policy, as well as just some things that we've learned and understood since we lasted an update in April of 2022. There was an open comment period from January 4th through the 19th that all county employees and departments were eligible to provide comments on our final draft. I want to thank the seven departments that did have the opportunity to provide comment on that. The final version of the policy is in my docket right now. We'll be getting that to legal for their final review as well as to the Chief Administrative Officer. And then we'll get the final, final before this commission, probably the third or fourth week of February. And along with that, again, will be the rescission of 2003 resolution to rescind the Montana Procurement Act. And we've spoken with each of you about that as well. On the American Rescue Plan Act front or ARPA, as we've spoken about, Treasury has defined their definition of obligation to be under contract or subrecipient agreement by the end of December 31 of 2024. So to meet that deadline, department staff, Carrie and I, will be meeting with finance, administration, and other departments to bring forward recommendations of how to spend our remaining ARPA funds. So our remaining funds are what we're referring to as our inflationary set aside. That was the pool of funding that we had available for projects if they went over budget. As well as project funds that have come back from projects that went under budget, and which we've had quite a few of as of recent. We'll be coming forward probably in March in this regularly scheduled meeting to provide those recommendations and then having final recommendations in time for the 2025 budget process. On the grants update, happy to announce that we've been awarded nearly $1 million in community development block grant funds this past fall. These are all going to organizations within the county. Helena Y. DBCA, Lawrence Crittenan, and the Craig Watersewer District are all going to be receiving community development block grant funds through the county in the coming couple of years. So that's a pretty huge accomplishment to be getting that much money coming to our county this round. Upcoming grant activities, in addition to the grants that Jenny noted, Misty Edwards and I are working together on a forestry plan grant. This is funds that are available through Department of Natural Resources and Conservation's Urban Forestry Program to do a tree plan for Hooper Park in Lincoln. So this is an idea that came forward from the Lincoln Parks Board. It has support from the Lincoln Community Council to look at providing more deciduous shade trees in the northern part of the park, the skate park, the ballpark, the playground, that part of the park that doesn't have as many trees as the campground does. That grant is due on the 16th, and I'll be bringing it forward for your consideration on the 15th. And then final note, I met with our city partners yesterday. And our annual community needs assessment meeting, which we hold every year in partnership with the city, is planned for March 14th, 6:00 PM in Room 326 across the hallway here. This is our annual hearing where we invite community organizations to present their needs and ongoing work in the community, as well as potential projects for future CDBG sponsorship. More information and meeting details will be out in mid-month. Happy to take any questions.
Fantastic. Thank you. Questions for Anne Commissioners?
Just just a comment. This is my first experience with a with a really highly functioning purchasing and grants department, and I really appreciate the way you do your job. Your staff has been wonderful, and you're constantly saving us money. The the way that we have the commission gave you gave direction about using these monies that came from DC to to fund one-time projects. You followed very well. And we did a good, and I think you've done a great job of giving us plans to use that money that wouldn't create ongoing expenses for the county where we would have to raise tax. to where we would have to raise taxpayer, uh, tax dollars in order to keep funding them. And I just really appreciate what's going on in your department.
Mr. Chair Commissioner, thank you very much. And I want to shout out to my team. I have an exceptional team, Casey and Carrie, about helping produce that mission as well.
I'm glad you brought them up because they are exceptional and yep, gratitude to them. I know they're not here, but I'm sure they're, sure they're watching. This is like
I think they are.
Reality television on, isn't it? I'm sure they're watching. Yes. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Anything else? Okay. Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chair Commissioners. My name is Matt Walter, and I am the Department Chair for the Lewis and Clark County Extension Office. Uh, starting off with our agriculture section. So we have completed the first two classes of what is called the Mid-Mountain Pest Series. Uh, that is a pesticide applicator training series that is held January, February, and March every other year on even years. Uh, it helps support pesticide applicators in the county who have to complete six hours of educational, continuing educational credits within a five-year cycle. Um, right now, we have 130 applicators in the county, and of those, we have about 50 who are complete, and hopefully in the next two weeks, we will be close to having all of them with their fulfilled six credits. Um, but this goes through March, so they still have plenty of opportunities to get it done. We are also in the middle of our community education series with, partnered with Helena College. Um, right now I am teaching a small acre management class and a hobby gardener's class. So right now, both of those are fairly full. Um, the small acreage management class is focused on management activities if you own 40 or less acres. So weed control, animal control, uh, conserve, conservation and sustainability practices. And then the hobby gardener class is just a four-class series that is out to teach some advanced practices for gardeners. So those are ending at the end of February. Um, on the community vitality and family consumer sciences side, Shay Burisma. Um, we have all had quite a few association meetings this month, but she is getting ready to jump back into her Strong Peoples program here in the next couple of weeks. She will also be doing a youth personal finance class with the library as well as a leadership series. So she has all of those coming up. Um, on the 4H side of things, right now we have 458 youth enrolled and 102 volunteers enrolled. Um, Emily Scruggs, our 4H agent, has been very busy. So recently, we had a shooting sports invitational that was, um, a state invitational, had over 400 participants. That turned out very well. They just had a camp counselor retreat with 12 of their counselors. Uh, it was the first one they've ever done. They taught leadership practice and teamwork practice with those kids. We also had a marketing and thank you workshop, um, heavy on the marketing side for our livestock kids, to kind of help them promote themselves and the selling of their animals. We have several events coming up over the next month. On the 4H side of things, there is going to be our Grand Foods event held this weekend. And then in March, there will be our Communications Day, which, um, is just an opportunity for those kids to kind of show off their demonstration skills. And then finally, with our partnership with SNAP Ed, uh, Chloe Lundquist, our SNAP instructor, has, within the month, taught 27 youth, um, Yum! classes, which is Youth Understanding My Plate. So it's the sort of, it's what replaced the food pyramid essentially. And she has those classes, uh, once, two, even three times a day, and she'll be continuing on with that through April, I believe. So that is the extension report.
Wow.
Well, I tried to fly through it.
Lots going on for everyone. Questions, Commissioners?
I just really appreciate seeing that MSU jacket and and letting, letting Commissioner, uh, uh, Hunt House and look at it.
Yeah, I appreciate that very, very much.
We can get you another one, a maroon one if you need.
You know, I'm an XL, so whenever you're ready, Mr. Chair.
No, I still have my standard question. Is my apple tree going to be alive this spring via this cold snap that just happened?
I have all the faith in the world, sir.
Okay, good. Well, I'll be calling.
I look forward to it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Did we miss anyone? Any department here that we haven't talked to yet? Well, he's an elected official, and he was here the other day. So we had, uh, for those that know, we had elected officials here on that was last, uh, Thursday, right? And, uh, they did, did their round of, uh, updates. So we won't make, uh, our county attorney's office come up because his boss already talked to us the other day. Um, I just want to say thank you to the, to the departments and the department heads that were here today. It is really important to not only connect with us, but to share what you do with our community and in, um, while we, we meet all the time, we've been meeting all the time, but our meeting has not been as, uh, public as this one, though it's been open to the public. Not as many public probably participate as they do for this meeting. So that's why we moved it here. And, um, we'll do it once a quarter, and I'm really grateful for the work that all of you do and all of your staff. We have such a great county family that does so much work for this community. And everyone has our community in mind. They have the taxpayer in mind, and they're trying to provide the best service they can to people in, in our community. As always, in, uh, in, in all of our lives, there's places and things that we can do to improve and bumps we run into in, in the road, whether they're financial or, as Carrie described, we have to turn over and have to hire new employees and do training and all of that. But we do a great job overall, and I'm, it's because of you and all of the people that work for you and with you in your different departments. So with gratitude, I appreciate you enduring this today and and sharing with us all the things that you do. Commissioners, anything you want to add before we end this portion of our meeting?
Thanks to our great staff. We really appreciate it.
Yes, absolutely.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
I, I just want to echo that and thank all the leadership team for being here today. Um, I hope what you heard today really reflects at a high level, uh, the emphasis on customer service, serving our citizens with programs and services. And I feel very fortunate to, uh, work with such dedicated people. So I just wanted to throw my voice behind that. Thank you all very much. And, um, I wanted to also let you know that our emergency manager, it was already mentioned by Greg McNally today, but there's a, uh, training going on today. That's why Kyle Sturgill Simon isn't here. But I thought I would mention very briefly, today is focused on response to emergency situations and tomorrow is focused on recovery. And also, um, uh, our emergency management team is continuing to work on updating the hazard mitigation plan, and that will be coming back. And also, um, Commissioners, in the past, and this is, this is a little early to have this conversation, but in the past, we've really tried to keep an eye on weather conditions and specifically fire conditions. And Kyle and I were just talking about this earlier this week. From time to time, the Commissioners have wanted to have an update regarding fire conditions as we get into the spring in particular. So we'll keep an eye on that. And then the last thing Commissioners, I thought I would share today is just we have a joint meeting later today, beginning at 4:00 PM with the City of Helena. We are attempting to look at putting together our joint budgets meeting with the City of Helena for April this year. And, um, then lastly, the county commission meeting for February the 13th has been canceled. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. And I appreciate you bringing up Disaster and Emergency Services. I'm going to be at the second half of the training tomorrow. I'm looking forward to that. But last night at the Fire Council meeting, um, they, one of the themes was for everyone to remain on, on guard because, uh, as we know, the weather's been really erratic, and when we go through those warm spells, we're still at pretty high risk of, of fire. I think they talked about there was a five-acre grass fire in the, in Cascade County during the warm spell, just this last warm spell. So even in the middle of winter, we have fire danger that remains. So be careful, especially those that live in the wooey, the wild, wildland urban interface. And, uh, we'll move on from this. But thank you all very much. And, uh, as we transition, I just want to say, uh, thank you. I appreciate the folks that have stuff on the rest of the agenda for being here and enduring this as well. It's important. I hope you learned something, but, uh, we're going to take a five-minute break so people can use the restroom and refresh their coffee here before we take up our next item. So we'll take a five-minute break. Thank you. Hey, let's reconvene. Welcome back, everyone. Thank you for your patience. Really appreciate it. We will move on to number four, item number four on our agenda, which is a contract between Lewis and Clark Public Health and JG Research and Evaluation. Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the Commission. I'm Sarah Sandow, the Community Health Promotion Division Administrator for Lewis and Clark Public Health. Today I have before you a professional services contract with JG Research in the amount of $15,000 that will start once signed and will sunset on June 30th, 2024. The funds for this contract come from our Human Resources and Services Administration for a year federal grant that you all approved, um, earlier in the summer. Uh, it started in July, and it's around improving substance use prevention resources in our county. This project was outlined in our application when we applied for the funding as well. The Lewis and Clark County Behavioral Health Crisis Systems Analysis was created in 2021 by JG Research through funding from the state. So the funding didn't come from us locally. We just were able to benefit from the report. The local group working on substance use wanted an update to this report as well as a more focused look at substance use data, um, in addition to the crisis data that was already in part of that. Really looking at our, what are our prevention data, treatment data, and resource data. This work group working on the project will be a subset of the local advisory council. Um, the one that's going through the strategic planning now, so we'll see how that strategic planning comes out, but the group regardless will be working on substance use prevention. This data, along with the work group efforts, will help direct where the group focuses their efforts for the next three and a half years. We worked with county procurement to ensure we followed the appropriate steps for getting the quote and going into contract, and staff, staff recommends approval.
Thank you very much. Questions, Commissioners?
Just, uh, I noticed, I, looking at the old, old report, um, it looked like the old report had a, a good focus on combination of, of mental health issues with the substance abuse, and is that anticipated to continue in the, in the update?
Yes, yes.
Great.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Great. Commissioner?
Question. I, when I was reviewing these documents last, it was Friday, so it's been a while. However, one of my, the things I noticed on the the contract cover sheet, there is, um, all these little points we have to check, and one of them says, um, legal has completed review of the agreement and it's colored in no. And is there as, does this not require a, a review by legal, or why is the?
I think that was a mistake. I, it has been approved. Is that correct, Nico?
Did you look at this?
Chairman Commissioners, so, um, did I capture the county policy correctly? So a lot of times what the setup is, is that it's on a standard contract that has been pre-approved by the county attorney's office, that that contract doesn't necessarily run through our office prior, prior to it being on the agenda. Um, also, if it's a, um, if it's someone else's contract, the staff always has the option to, you know, run things through our office. And so I think that's the check part of it. Um, the top of my head, I can't remember if our office has reviewed this or not. Um, we review a lot of contracts. Certainly, we can go back and look forward, but, uh, I think majority of the time when it ends up on your agenda, it's gone through all the appropriate processes, so.
Okay, I just, you know, want to make sure all the i's are dotted because if we end up in some kind of a lawsuit over this, why didn't we get legal review? Obviously, it says it wasn't. So just curious. That's all.
Thank you, Commissioner. Um, the report, uh, the past report that Commissioner Rolf, uh, alluded to, and then the upcoming report when it's done, where can the public have access to that and find that?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. It currently is on our Lewis and Clark Public Health website, as well as the Local Advisory Council website as well. Um, but once the update, we'll make sure that it's posted in both of those spots, as well as we'll post it to social media. Um, we'll do some public announcements that it's ready to go for the public to view and view when they have time and are ready.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, any further questions? Okay, how about public comment on this item? Public comment on this item? Any public comment? All right, hearing none. Commissioners, are there a motion, please?
Mr. Chair, I would move to accept the contract between Lewis and Clark Public Health and JG Research and valuation as explained by Ms. Sandow.
Second.
Move to second and approve the contract as presented. Further discussion, Commissioners? Any further discussion? All right, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda. Thank you, sir. Next item on the agenda is agreement to extend a preliminary plat approval of the amended plat of Miles Minor. Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Board of Commissioners.
Technology works.
Get the slides going here real quick. Um, so yeah, good morning. Uh, Mr. Chair, Board of Commissioners, for the record, my name is Rachel Ward with Community Development and Planning. In front of you today is a request for an extension of the preliminary approval of the amended plat of the Miles Minor subdivision. As you can see in this vicinity map, uh, the subdivision is located on the west side of Hart Lane, north of Kerr Lane, and consists of a 4.15 acre parcel to be divided into two, 2.06 acre parcels. Preliminary approval was granted on February 18th of 2021 with 14 conditions of approval. And the applicant is now requesting a three-year extension of the preliminary approval, which would extend that approval to February 18th of 2027. The applicants provided an application which notes that they are working towards completing these conditions of approval. They have negotiated an agreement with Heron Creek Subdivision for use of their fire suppression system. They've submitted a five-year noxious weed plan that has been approved. They've submitted an application for the DEQ COSA rewrite required with the development. And they have, uh, with your engineer, completed an initial evaluation of the offsite roads. Uh, their application indicates that this has been submitted to the county and communicating with their engineer, it has not yet been submitted to the county. They're working on a few final details on that end. Uh, and then lastly, the application notes that they anticipate completing the remaining conditions, uh, by, uh, the middle of this year. Uh, however, they would like the full three-year extension, uh, in the event that, uh, as they note, if they run into difficulties or run out of money. And just kind of for your awareness, these are two photos of the property of the, um, uh, the photo on the left is, uh, the southernmost lot. Uh, there is an existing house. Um, and then the photo two on the right is, um, the northernmost lot that would be created. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions. I do believe that the applicant's son, uh, is here to speak on behalf of Tim and Elaine Miles, uh, if you have any questions for him as well.
Great. Thank you. Just, uh, quick for you, um, just to sum it up. We've, uh, preliminary approved this already. I know, um, a lot of these questions, I know the answers to. I just want to confirm them with you. Um, and they're making good progress, which you described. Anticipate finishing the project in 2024. However, just in case and for unforeseen circumstances, want to, that extension to last until 27. And, um, uh, with that, all is on track for the most part, right? Mike, go ahead.
Mr. Chair, you're correct. They clearly demonstrated that they are working towards these conditions. It sounds like there's just a few remaining items that they need to complete.
Right. You had a question?
Yeah, I, I am looking at the map here and, um, and maybe the law has changed, but isn't there a provision where we can do a one-time, um, amendment to the boundary? So one plot like this can be divided in two? Is it, can you tell me why they're having to go through the more vigorous, um, requirements of a, uh, amended plat for a subdivision?
Sure. Uh, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Payne, um, I can, uh, speak to my understanding of this. I know that Greg McNally was here when this preliminary uh, plat proposal was, um, submitted. Uh, so they are creating an additional lot. This lot, uh, was part of a previous subdivision, um, and up into, up until the last legislative session, uh, a division through family transfer wasn't permitted in platted subdivisions.
Oh.
So that is why, if they wanted to divide this lot, that they had to go through this subdivision review process.
So the change in law has So the change in law has change, had to change their plans, I guess.
I will further elaborate that there are minimum lot size that is required for family transfers within platted subdivisions. So even if they were to come in with this proposal today, because there is part two zoning in this location, it's zoned rural residential mixed use, the minimum lot size is ten acres. Family transfers and correct me if I'm wrong, but can go down to five acre lots unless the zoning allows for smaller lots. In this case, the ten acre minimum lot size. And the fact that this property is four acres, I don't think that provision would have done them much good.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that for me.
Thank you very much. As well, I'll just add that we had preliminary approval of this in two thousand and twenty-one, which, when the proposal's brought forward, it's the rules that exist at that time that we're, that we're bound by. Any other questions, Commissioner Rolf?
No.
Okay, thank you. I don't know if the applicant or applicant's representative would like to say anything or present to the commission at all. Okay. Great, thank you very much. Mr. McNally, anything you want to add?
Mr. Chairman, no. I believe Ms. Ward answered Commissioner Payne's question effectively. Thank you.
Mr. Hash, anything? Good. Anything you want to add?
Oh, sorry. Mr. Chair and Commissioners, again, just to reiterate, until the last legislative session, the family transfer exemption only applied to property outside of a platted subdivision. So that's why this project is before you as a subdivision.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, with that, any public comment on this item? Any public comment on this extension? Any public comment? All right, hearing none. Commissioners, is there a motion? Please.
Mr. Chair, I would, I would move to accept the agreement to extend preliminary approval of the amended plat of Miles Minor subdivision as explained by Ms., by Ms. Ward.
Second.
Move to second to approve the agreement to extend preliminary approval of amended plat of Miles Minor subdivision as presented. Further discussion, Commissioners. Thank you very much for bringing it forward. Thank you, the Miles family, for work they're doing and good luck. Hope, hope it finishes up within the timeframe you're, you're looking at. With that, Commissioners, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye. Thank you. All right. Appreciate it. Next item on the agenda is Resolution twenty twenty-four dash one one to amend the Red Fox Meadows Road Rural Improvement District number two thousand and nineteen dash zero three. Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. Angie Hubbard with Community Development and Planning. You have before you Resolution twenty twenty-four dash eleven to amend the Red Fox Meadows Road Rural Improvement District two thousand and nineteen dash three for the maintenance of internal road network within Red Fox Meadows subdivision. The bold outline represents the boundary of, of the Road Rural Improvement District, which is the same location as the perimeter boundary of Red Fox Meadows subdivision. The location is east and adjacent to Lake Helena Drive and south and adjacent to Canyon Ferry Road. The boundary of this RID currently includes the Prestige at Red Fox Meadows subdivision within the center of Red Fox Meadows. Resolution twenty twenty-three dash one oh seven intent to amend Red Fox Meadows Road Rural Improvement District was, was approved on December twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty-four. Following that approval, a legal notice was published in the newspaper on December twentieth, thirtieth, excuse me, two thousand and twenty-three and January sixth, two thousand and twenty-four. Notice was also mailed to all property, property owners within the district. The thirty-day protest period ended on February second. Today, we are holding a public hearing to hear all protests made and consider the Resolution twenty twenty-four dash eleven to amend the Red Fox Meadows Road Rural Improvement District two thousand and nineteen dash three, and no written protest was received. This RID seeks to support the maintenance of the internal roads and improvements within the subdivision. This would include such things as snow plowing, culvert cleaning, street sweeping, culvert and storm drain maintenance, mailbox operations and maintenance, crack ceiling and chip ceiling. The estimated cost per year for maintenance is thirty-three thousand dollars, and this would equal approximately two hundred and twenty dollars a year per property. And staff recommends approval of this request.
Thank you very much, Hubbard. Just to reiterate, we already approved the intent to, to create. We've gone through a protest period, a three-day protest, have received none, and today is another opportunity for folks to come forward and, and make comment.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, that's correct.
Okay, staff recommends approval. Thank you very much. Commissioners, with that summation, any questions? Please, Commissioner.
Once again, I'm confused. So we are looking at an RID or a yeah, an amendment to the Rural Improvement District. And we're, this is about paying for the roads in the subdivision as platted currently.
And this will also include the infrastructure for the Prestige at Red Fox Meadows.
Okay, and that was where I was wondering, because this the lots for the Prestige subdivision are they're not yet existing in, in this situation, but they will after we get all done. Is this all being done in the proper order?
Mr. Chair, Commissioners? Yes, it is being done in the proper order. This will ensure that their condition of approval is met, which you have on the agenda after this, the final plat application for the Prestige at Red Fox Meadows. And this is lot one twenty-seven. The Prestige subdivision is taking place on lot one twenty-seven of Red Fox Meadows subdivision.
Okay.
It's a subdivision within a subdivision.
Okay, I, I understand now. Thank you for explaining that. No more.
Thank you. Okay, any other questions?
None.
Any comment? Any comment on this resolution? Any public comment? Okay, Commissioners, we will close public comment and ask for a motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty-four dash eleven.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the Resolution twenty twenty-four dash eleven as presented by Ms. Hubbard.
Second. Move to second to approve the resolution as presented. Further discussion, Commissioners. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye. Aye, thank you. Next item on the agenda is Resolution twenty twenty-four dash twelve to amend the Red Fox Meadows Stormwater Rural Improvement District number two thousand and nineteen dash zero four. Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. Angie Hubbard with Community Development and Planning. You have before you Resolution twenty twenty-four dash twelve to amend the Red Fox Meadows Stormwater Rural Improvement District two thousand and nineteen dash four for the maintenance of stormwater facilities within Red Fox Meadows subdivision. The bold outline again represents the boundary of the, of the Stormwater Rural Improvement District, which is the same location as the perimeter boundary of Red Fox Meadows subdivision. The location is east and adjacent to Lake Helena Drive and south and adjacent to Canyon Ferry Road. The boundary of this RID currently includes the middle lot, which will contain the Prestige at Red Fox Meadows subdivision. Resolution twenty twenty-three dash one oh eight intent to amend the Red Fox Meadows Stormwater Rural Improvement District was approved on December twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty-four. And following that approval, a legal notice was published in the newspaper on December thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three and January sixth, two thousand and twenty-four. Notice was also mailed to all property owners within the district. The thirty-day protest period ended on February second. And today, we are holding a public hearing to hear all protests made and consider Resolution twenty twenty-four dash twelve to amend the Red Fox Meadows Stormwater Rural Improvement District two thousand and nineteen dash four, and no written protest was received. This RID seeks to provide maintenance for the stormwater improvements within the subdivision, and this would include such things as stormwater pond sediment control, drainage ditch sediment removal, slope stability, and weed control. The estimated cost per year for maintenance is three thousand three hundred and eighty-eight dollars, which would equal, equal twenty-two dollars a year per property. And staff recommends approval of this request, and I'm more than happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Any questions, Commissioners, at this point?
No questions.
Nope.
Okay, how about public comment on this item? Public comment? Public comment on this resolution? All right, hearing none. Commissioners, is there a motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty-four dash twelve?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Move to second to approve the resolution as presented. Further discussion, Commissioners. Thank you. Appreciate, appreciate you bringing this forward, and it is, it is, it can be a bit confusing because it is a process we have to go through, and when you amend one of these, it is somewhat technical, and we're adding, adding prestige to the mix here, so it is one of those things you have to track over months as well. So it's an interesting animal that we have in our system, but it is necessary. So thank you for following all the steps and for doing what we need to do to make sure that we've crossed our t's and dotted our i's. Commissioners, with that, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye. Aye, thank you. Next item on the agenda is Resolution twenty twenty-four dash one three to amend Red Fox Meadows Trail Rural Improvement District number two thousand and nineteen dash zero five.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. Angie Hubbard with Community Development and Planning. You have before you Resolution twenty twenty-four dash thirteen to amend the Red Fox Meadows Trails Rural Improvement District two thousand and nineteen dash five for the maintenance of trails within Red Fox Meadows subdivision. The bold outline represents the boundary of the road, of the Trails Rural Improvement District, which is the same location as the perimeter boundary of Red Fox Meadows subdivision. The location is east and adjacent to Lake Helena Drive and south and adjacent to Canyon Ferry Road. The boundary of this RID currently includes the Prestige at Red Fox Meadows subdivision. Resolution twenty twenty-three dash one oh nine intent to amend the Red Fox Meadows Trails Rural Improvement District was approved on December twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty, twenty-four. Following that approval, a legal notice was published in the newspaper on December thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three and January sixth, two thousand and twenty-four. Notice was also mailed to all property owners within the district, and the thirty-day protest period ended on February second. Today, we are holding a public hearing to hear all protests made and consider Resolution twenty twenty-four dash thirteen to amend the Red Fox Meadows Trails Rural Improvement District two thousand and nineteen dash five, and no written protest was received. This RID seeks to provide maintenance for trails within the subdivision. This would include such things as resurfacing, mowing, and weed control. The estimated cost per year for maintenance is four thousand one hundred and fifty-eight dollars, and this would equal twenty-seven dollars a year per property. And staff recommends approval of this, of the resolution.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Questions, Commissioners?
I have a question. This is not, well, it's about all of these resolutions. One of the complaints we hear is, oh my God, my property taxes are going so high. So so there's twenty-seven dollars in this the Trails improvement, and then there's each one increases exponentially, or it's not the right word, but it increases the property taxes that each of these lot owners will be paying. Is that correct?
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, I'm not in this case, the addition of the Prestige lots will actually lower the, the different RID amounts. And I do not have those numbers, but
Okay.
Like for Trails, for instance, it was like it reduces it by four dollars.
Okay, because it's being shared by more people.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, exactly, that's correct.
And as a compliment to the way this county is run, I get a lot of, I go to the grocery store and people stop, talk to me about things, and this one lady, she came up and, and I was asking, we were talking about the snow plowing in her area, and she said, and I said, are you part of a rural improvement district? She said, I don't know, the good fairies just show up and they move our snow and they cut every, cut the grass. And I'm thinking, that is our county folks. People don't even know that you know, this is a part of what they're paying for. So I just hope we can spread the word a little bit that your taxes are going up because you're getting more services, and it's part of why you want to live out. You don't want to live out there and take care of your own weeds and snow plowing. So thank you for what you do.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Other questions?
None.
Thank you. Any public comment on this item? Any public comment? Any public comment? All right, hearing none. Is there a motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty-four dash one three?
So moved.
Second.
Move to second to approve Resolution twenty twenty-four dash one three as presented. Further discussion. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye. Thank you. All right, next item on the agenda is the final plat application for Prestige at Fox, Red Fox Meadows.
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, Angie Hubbard, Community Development and Planning. Before you today, I am presenting the final plat application for the Prestige at Red Fox Meadows subdivision. The interior red outline includes the boundary location of the final plat application for the Prestige at Red Fox Meadows. The property is lot one twenty-seven of Red Fox Meadows subdivision and is located east and adjacent to Lake Helena Drive and south and adjacent to Canyon Ferry Road. On the screen is page two of the final plat that you are reviewing for approval. This is a thirty lot subdivision, twenty-six of which are for single-family residential use. Two lots are for stormwater detention, and one lot is a walking trail, and one lot is floodplain slash open space. And this subdivision will be served by individual wells and connect to the East Helena Sewer System. Preliminary approval was granted by the commission on July nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, subject to twenty-five conditions of approval. The applicant has completed all items necessary for the conditions of approval, and all improvements have been installed. You have received a staff report with documentation to state as to how all twenty-five conditions of approval have been met. And staff recommends approval. Mr. Chair, Commissioners, this concludes my presentation, and I'm available to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. And yes, I'm looking at staff report here, and that is one of the questions that we always have. Have the conditions been met? And the last three items were part of those conditions, correct? Then we had to make sure that Prestige was included in the, the RIDs in order to move forward with the final plat. So in terms of process and and how things are laid out, this is a part of the, part of how it works.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, that's correct. Condition number eighteen, seventeen and twenty-two have now been met.
Right. And those are the remain, remaining ones that had to be met prior to this potential action.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, that's correct.
Great. All right, Commissioners, questions about the final plat? Mr. McNally, did you, were you raising your hand to say something? You wanted to add something in here?
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, just want to recognize the completion of this final plat, and we're pleased to bring it forward to you. I know Ms. Hubbard has been working diligently to, to work with the applicants to complete the conditions. Justine, who's available in the audience today, has been working really hard to meet the conditions, as well as our the engineer on the project and the surveyor on the project, TripleTree Engineering and Dan Dingle surveying. All these folks working in partnership to make sure the i's are dotted, t's are crossed, that these conditions are met. We're pleased to bring this forward for you for final approval.
Great, thank you very much. Thank you, Angie. Appreciate it a lot. So prior to going in further, and any, anyone like to address the commission? Sam? Welcome. If you'd give us your name and address for the record.
Yes, my name is Barb Hamlin, and I live at sixteen twenty-five University Street in Helena. And Chairman and Commissioners, I, I just want to thank And Chairman and Commissioners, I, I just want to thank you for your consideration in final plat of Prestige at Red Fox. Prestige is the final piece, kind of the crown jewel of completing Jerry's dream of a subdivision that would have visual appeal. Homes on the pricing spectrum from the Homes for Humanity or the Habitat for Humanity and the upper end, including condos and residential homes. We are blessed to have had a great response from builders, realtors, and the public. I am extremely proud of the final production or product that we have brought forward. And again, I thank you for considering granting acceptance to this final plat. I also want to give a special thanks to Justine McKechnie, who had to step in after Jerry's passing, and Jill Nissler for helping me in so many ways. And I just thank you for your consideration of this final Prestige plat at Red Fox Meadows.
Thank you, Mrs. Sam. I appreciate you being here today and thank you to the, your team out there. Appreciate you guys being here as well. All right, any, anything for the Commissioners before public comment? Any other public comment? Any public comment? Any public comment on this item? Okay, Commissioners, we're looking for a motion to approve the final plat of the Prestige at Red Fox Meadows Major Subdivision. Project number S U B D 2022-01 to get it all in there.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
In second.
Move to second and approve the final plat application as presented. Commissioners, further comment?
Just want to thank the folks for significant improvement in the availability of homes for our community. And I hope you make a little money on it and and good luck with your endeavor.
Here, here.
And I'd just like to say thank you to our planning staff. Angie, thank you very much, as well as applicant and all those that have worked on this project. As you can see, just by the documents before us today, that it does not happen without significant work. And a lot of hoops to jump through. It is the world we live in in terms of federal, state, and local regulation to make sure that we have dotted the Is and crossed the Ts and that the folks were really representing the folks that are going to be living there for their lifetime or the next ones that live there, next ones, next ones. And so we want to make sure that we have those instruments in place that will make sure it's a great place to live for the long term. And I think that we've contributed to that. So thank you all very much. Appreciate it and wish you the best with the next, next phase. Yes, Angie.
Just wanted to say thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Anything else we're missing? All right, Commissioners. With that, all in favor of the motion? Signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, thank you all very much. Good luck. Best of luck to you. And we'll have some things to sign here, I believe, at the end. All right. Prior to that, we are at that time in the meeting where we will take public comment on any item that is under the jurisdiction but not on today's agenda. Is there any further public comment? Any further public comment? Hearing none, we will stand adjourned. Thank you.